This is time I let this call for the first evening for this evening. Please stand.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Please raise that for all the times. Harold Shaw, service. Good evening, thanks for all attending this evening. At this time, I would like to take thank, excuse me, thank Mr. Bert Cunningham, Director of the 69th honorary regimental headquarters for the Veterans Day Observance, which took place on the November 6th, the close command of Frank Houches of the William Bradford Turner Post number 265, for coordinating the Veterans Day ceremony, as well as Jacqueline Burney Eldringham of the American Vision Auxiliary, who distributed poppies to the public in honor of our deceased veterans on Veterans Day. I was happy to hear that so many residents were able to attend. Since there has been some recent discussion about the leaf disposal procedures of the village, I'd like to address this matter. The street department began its leaf collection, and you can check the village website and Facebook page for updates as to when they will pick up leaves in your area of town. The parks department does the leaf removal in the central section, supplemented by recreation and maintenance help, which typically has four crews to do leaf pickup each day. Residents should place only leaves and old plant material, uh, excuse me, only leaves in the street. Other items such as sticks and old plant material may damage machinery and slow down the operation of the leaf pickup. Avoid parking cars over leaves as this slows the operation considerably, not to mention that it's also a fire hazard. Do not place leaves on medians and malls as this will kill or damage the grass. Please do not obscure fire degrees by piling leaves around them. To clarify some of the confusion, landlords can place leaves in the street for companies worked upon up until the time the village stops collecting leaves, which is usually early December. Contractors cannot dump leaves from the trucks onto the street. I would also now like to announce the formation of a St. Paul's Committee. The chairman of the committee will be ex-mayor Brian DeVaney, and ex-village administrator Bob Shelley will be the vice chairman of this committee. The list of all the resident volunteers and subcommittees will be published on the village website and in the mayor's column. I thank all the residents who have volunteered to invest the future of St. Paul's main building. I now call upon the department heads beginning with Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing on agenda, but I want to bring up a couple items. First, we are collecting toys for tots, so we already have one full box. We have a few more boxes left, and also village hall. So if you have any toys, please bring them unwrapped to the police department at village hall, and we will forward it to the Marines. Also, last week, there were, there were two burglaries in the village. There is a Nassau County pattern that started on the Gulf Shore. It's actually, yeah, last night, it was all the way down, the same pattern, all the way down to Nassau Bigfoot. So part of this pattern is very simple things we could do to try to avoid being a victim. First thing is, six o'clock at night, when you leave your house and it's dark, and not too many houses are dark at six o'clock, so it is an invitation. Please leave your lights on, have the TV on, radio on, make it always look like there's someone there. A lot of people, when they leave their house just for a short ride to pick up something, sometimes they won't put their alarm on, they'll leave the door open. Please, this is all part of the pattern. So these crews work quick, and they really want to avoid confrontation if they can. So to help us out, again, if anybody sees any suspicions, sees something on their Ring cameras, have a plate number for us. We're getting more calls since these incidents, as well as smaller areas in the county, and we are working with the burglary pattern team of Nassau County Police Department to put all evidence together and get these suspects. So please, just take due care at that time. We're looking at 5:30 to about 8:39. That seems to be the sweet spot for them. And because most people who have lights on at home, they're going to be, they're going to be awake, and they're going to have lights on. So if they see darkness, that's when they take a chance. A lot of times, they'll ring the doorbell first, and then go right to the back. Most of the hits in the county have been back, back door, back windows. So please, if you help us, and people have been great the last couple days, calling in suspicious cars, and we'll check everyone out.
Thank you for the information, I really appreciate it. Next, Chief Moe.
I'm looking at the agenda, Mayor. I just want to ensure everyone uses a little more caution on Thanksgiving next week. Thanksgiving is one of the biggest days of the year for accidental cooking-related fires. With that being said, I hope everyone has a happy and safe Thanksgiving, and you don't need the fire department on Thursday. From your Bert Cunningham. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief, thanks. Next, the treasurer, Mr. Moe.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. On the agenda tonight, there's only one item, is a transfer of funds requested by village administrator, Mr. Squazzy, and he will cover this transfer in a week.
That's it? Is that you, you have another, for this superintendent?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor, board of trustees. I also have nothing on the agenda this evening, but if the board has any comments, questions that I can be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you all well. Good evening, everyone. Mayor, I have no single item on from my office. However, I will be asking the board for a resolution to suspend the rules in order to add four resolutions. Back on October 21st, this board authorized the making of certain grant applications in connection with establishing equipment for cleaning of the 1/4 dioxide in various wells. Not all of the wells were covered at that time, so we would ask the board to pass essentially the identical resolutions this evening, but to cover additional locations. One at the well number, plant number seven, one at the country club, one at wells numbers 15 and 16, and the last at well, plant number nine. So these resolutions authorize H2M using Mr. Squazzy as the signator on the grant applications to apply to the federal government for a part of the $3 billion in clean water funds that are made available under the federal budget. And we don't know how much exactly we'll get, but apparently up to about 60% of debt permitted costs are potentially reimbursable under this fund. So if it, if it pleased with the pleasure of the board, I will ask that those four items be added by a suspension of the rules in addition to the consent calendar. Moved by, seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? So the four resolutions are added to the consent calendar.
Thank you, Peter. Um, last, Mr. Squazzy.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, board of members of the public. Mayor, the first item, Mrs. Wu asked off to me is the transfer of funds. This item is to request to transfer unused funds from the engineering regular salary into contractual services to fund additional on-call GIS services. Just for the public, GIS is a geographic information system that creates, manages, analyzes, and maps all types of data. GIS connects data to a map integrating location data, where things are, with all types of descriptive information, what things are like there. I'm using these funds to facilitate and enhance the documentation of information related to all of those assets, which will allow us to capture details about the likely expectancy, bill date, cost, contract, fiscal year, et cetera, associated with every asset, and will also aid us in planning future capital expenditures. Cover the story in budget presentations as well. This data will be integrated into the information managers of our Board of CAD, also known as computer aided design software used by the engineering department. Under Public Works, item number five. Every year, we look to bring crack brothers on using their competitive bidding rates with Nassau Community College to have them on standby during heavy snows so to assist the Department of Public Works, so they can help us clear parking lines. So we only need them, we only all need them, and like I said, the rates are competitive bid. Village Hall Detectives Room upgrade. Number six, there's not, has no cost to us. It is really a clarification of the capital project from 2021 for the Village Hall Detectives Room upgrade to include the installation of bulletproof glass. This is always part of the original project, but the bulletproof glass wording was inadvertently left out of the capital project description. So it's just a wording change. Number seven, Wells 13 and 14 AOP treatment. The backstory is, at the August 19th, we got a meeting, the board approved the bond amendment resolution for Wells 13 and 14, 14 located at the RSC Country Club. The amendment was fueled by a market drive, a market rise in prices, and also to remove existing smaller granular activated carbon, also known as GAC vessels, excavate and build the foundation for the new, new larger GAC vessels, eventually enclose these vessels in a permanent structure. In the agenda that was posted on the village website, the first bullet in this resolution requires a voiceover prior to revoke. This is not an award of a bid. The back of the tear was received in your package, which includes a letter of recommendation from H2M, identifies this as an award of a partial contract under the exemption from competitive bidding requirements adopted by the Emergency Contaminants Emergency Declaration Resolution of December 10, 2020. The agenda item this evening is asking for award authorization at the recommendation of H2M to award the partial contract for the excavation and construction of a concrete foundation at Country Club plant Wells 13 and 14, in the amount of $513,000 to Philip Ross Industry, also known as PRI. There will be a subsequent resolution on future work agenda to reward the remainder of this permanent work. We are working to get this foundation in the ground before the weather changes and to construct the major portions of this work prior to the start of the next offseason, which begins in April of 2022. Mr. B, you already covered the suspension of rules. I just wanted to clarify that this is an administrative resolution to allow me to act as the agent, authorize me to sign these grants and for H2M to submit them. It's without this, they can't submit their grants, which they do on Monday. So it's just administrative paperwork needed. That's all I have, Mayor, on this agenda. I'll take any questions from the board.
Lady trustees, have you questions at this time? Who's asked this one? I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The transfer of funds to GSX Services. This is $20,000 in addition to the original contract?
In this year's budget, I put $10,000 in there, just as placeholder. The thing is, the funds I'm putting here aren't just used by me. It's used, it's used for multiple things. We have, we have needs to have GIS on-call services used by engineers, sometimes by the finance department, the assessment area for, for our, our land segregation. So it's, it's, I don't have any signed project plans for this. It's just a resource, a pool of money. What I want to do is bring in Mr. Cobos from H2M, who's been working with the village for years, bring him in, sit down with the engineering team, and then ask for some of the clerical support as well, and teach them how we use GIS today, with our input from our own people, and how we can enhance and use it tomorrow to facilitate this data capture that I want to put in place, because we really don't have the facilities oriented.
Well, I understand, but my question is, did you have a contract before, right? It's been satisfied.
Yeah, we have.
You have $20,000 more to continue the process?
We have, we have a contract with them, we ran out of funds. We only got $9,000 out of the original. So this is a pretty detractive service to continue the relationship.
When you, when you make this payment of the $20,000?
This is not going, this is not payment, this is going to the account. So when I have work.
They'll be drawing against this account, but my question is, once you get this limited set of the budget, will it be a normal incentive for this?
No, it's not personal. We're using this to begin the process. I see this as an ongoing thing each year, until we can take it over ourselves. I'm writing, I'm working with the GIS person and our team to design the way we want to work in the future. So he's going to train us, so some of this is training, some of it might be actual work, which he'll give you a proposal. So I don't, I don't know if we'll need all this, or if we'll need more, but we have, this is part of the strategy, it's a new strategy. But it's not, it's not opening there.
Well, I don't want to.
No, it's, nothing's opening there.
No. Okay, moving on. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items? If you do have any comments, please state your name and address, and promote the topic, please. This is for agenda items. Anyone on Zoom?
Bob Orros. Go ahead, Mr. Orros.
Go ahead, Bob. Please unmute.
Can you unmute? He asked me to.
Don't take any now?
Yes.
Yeah, like that little fan, please, I want to spend, especially the resolution that was filed for exemption of competitive bidding, requiring more contracts to terminate the AOP treatment system. Now, is AOP treatment system, are they going to be part of every well, or is it going to be one system that's going to be used for multiple wells? And please explain what an AOP system is. I understand, but maybe the general public doesn't.
Okay, I won't go too deep into the science, but AOP stands for Advanced Oxidation Process. It is the only near state health department approved process to remove 1/4 dioxide and to treat PFOS and PFOA, which is a new regulation that started to surface in December of 2018. The village has aggressively sought treatment, designed treatment, and declared emergency, and we are on the cusp of implementing the system on nine of our 10 wells. The 10th well is below the limbs, but it's, it's what's known as action of all, which means it will eventually probably be treated, so it's immediately on now, it's well line. This removes 1/4 dioxide in two levels known as non-detect, which is the standard we want, it's not, it's not measurable. We have this treatment in place on, on six well levels right now. Like I said, nine is being designed. 15, 16 is under construction. Eight and 12 are being tested right now. Seven is online. 11 is authorized for work, we took it offline, did some other upgrades. So it's, it's, every well in the village, all 10 wells, will have the treatment. We only operate nine at a time. 15 and 16 can only operate one at a time because they're too close to each other. So we have 10 wells being treated, and it's not a portable unit. It's actually a reactor that's probably in a 20 by 15 size building, one story high. The water is, the water is taken out of the well. It's, we always test for samples, whatever the protocols of our health department. It is hydrogen peroxide, also known as H2O2, is added to the water. It is then passed through this AOP reactor, which is built by one company in Canada, Trojan Hill, and authorized supplies this equipment in New York State. And it burns off the dioxide, and then the GAC filters remove the peroxide, returning it back to the H2O that we then treat with chlorine, caustic soda, the pH, then we ship out into the distribution system.
Now, but what's, can you say that this, each individual well has its individual system? Is that what you're saying?
Each well has its own AOP reactor, yes.
Okay.
Except for, I'm sorry, except for 15, 15, 16 has one reactor, so one well is running at a time.
Okay. Now, for what I understand, if the AOP stands for, you're actually, what you're doing is mixing ozone in the water, and then you piss the water through ultraviolet. The rays of system, the lights are one of them, it kills a lot of the bacteria, and then it converts back to oxygen. I mean, that's simply what this is for, Nick?
I can't, I can't say the right or wrong, sir, I just, I've wanted my knowledge a little on this. I give a high level, I can't talk to, I never, I never heard ozone mentioned, so I'm not going to say ozone's into all, it's hydrogen peroxide. But I can't explain the chemical reactions going on.
Okay, well, as I said, my background is a little in science, and I did, I did do research on this, as to what is it that I made up of what it does. Apparently, that's just. Anybody who wants to look it up, and you might get it.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
You're welcome, Mr. Orros.
Thank you. Any more comments on Zoom? Anybody waving their hands?
No, sir.
No one else from the audience? Okay, move on. Next order of business is to approve the minutes of previous board trustees' meetings. The wagon motion to approve the minutes of the October 28th, 2021 special board meeting. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. You have a second? Let's continue. So we'll finish with the agenda items, and we'll move on to any citizen comments on non-agenda items. Oh, excuse me, sorry, I jumped there. Anyone to discuss this?
Are any mic on, please?
I don't think we did the November 4th. We have it 28th, but did we do the November 4th?
No, not really.
Right, and we have to approve the November 4th of regular meeting minutes as well. There were two sets of amendments there, Mayor.
No reason to start, I'm looking at the 28th. So November 24th is one?
November 4th.
November 4th, the last meeting.
A regular meeting minutes. And then while I'm at it, I'll move back as well.
And I'll second, I put your money, both of them.
I believe the motion to approve the minutes of November 4th is conveyed and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Do you have a number of those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is that a challenge?
No, people want to be seconded, huh?
Yes, sir. I believe that the mayor indicated that one item, I don't have the agenda any longer in front of me, but the item number is the number eight under external communications, to the extent that appears to be on the consent calendar. I believe that is being removed from the consent calendar, with the exception of, however, the permits would remain on, so item nine and 10 would continue on the consent calendar, absent a trustee asking for the removal. But with the exception of item eight and inclusive of the four resolutions relating to the grant application, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Moved by trustee Delaney, seconded by trustee Muneo, and trustee Foley as well. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion for the consent calendar passes.
Now we'll move on to the non-agenda items.
The, absolutely may do so, Mayor. However, ordinarily, at this time, you would address the one item that was removed from the consent calendar and determine whether you wish to have a discussion on it, remove it from the calendar altogether.
I don't think we discussed that item that was removed from the consent calendar. Yeah, why don't we discuss it? I think we're ready for more information from the board.
Mayor, we have these made, we did the review as far as what was submitted. We do have feedback, the comments weren't submitted, but the main focus is if we're going to be standing outside dining or not, that's the main.
Although there were some additional sub-questions relating to, for example, whether in the wintertime, these facilities would be authorized to have heaters, an extension of the existing agreement would prohibit heaters of any kind. And I wasn't sure, frankly, whether that was the intention on board, and so there are questions like that, that I think you may wish to discuss, but that's to the pleasure of the board.
Heaters is a broad term, and I know that there's gentlemen here from restaurants, and we did see, and we did see some specs on this little igloo that they wanted to use, that I think had some sort of heating home.
It did.
They did. They just plug in, kind of, but it's not a propane heater or anything like that, right? It's an old one, kind of.
It's electric, tight end.
That would be my objection, is a heater, this is like a product you buy.
Have you looked at, have you looked at the safety, what was submitted in the igloos with those heaters? Or do we have to look at that, or?
Well, we have to look at, we have to look at all aspects of that, for safety and for heat grass and for the electric component of it, for the heaters. So yes, I mean, there was an action submitted that was still under review. That's not yet been completed.
So the appropriate thing to do, they have to defer this until at least the next meeting?
We didn't do that, yes.
My, my, trustee, my understanding is that the board will review the application. There's incomplete information, and we also requested additional details, which we have not received. That's why I want to remove it from the calendar, because we don't have enough information.
So then I think we should clarify point eight, because point eight says whether or not we're going to extend the outdoor. That's not, point eight of what we're talking about now is specifically for them, for their submission, having board of trustee approval. That is much different than what's here.
Well, the agenda item is for an extension of their permit.
Of what, in general, isn't it for anybody in there?
No, no, because the application was only for two specific.
Specifically for them, and specifically then, it should be worded then. Once clears the building department, then we come back here.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that was my understanding.
Let's just, yeah, then let's just run into it.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I agree with that. This was enough for a broad approval at this time. This was just to deal with the issues that were brought in the arena, am I correct?
And Water City.
And Water City, yes.
But the board will recall that in public sessions, there were a number of discussions about things like heaters, about whether or not a structure that stays in place for more than six months becomes a permanent structure, whether or not that's a violation of code. There were a number of topics like that, that related to the topic of outdoor dining, that also bear on the two specific permanent extension requests.
Right, they also presented for, they were wanting to.
Yes. Absolutely, absolutely.
Right, so now what we're saying is, we want to vet those.
They're, they're actually accessory structures to the binary.
And then, once they go through approval there, does it have to come back here, or is it solely on Mr. June Ellis' approval?
As things currently stand, which doesn't mean you couldn't change it, but as things currently stand, the license agreements that are in place would expire on December 31st. So ending, only the board could authorize the extension of the license agreements with or without modification of clauses such as, etc.
So the only other piece was, it's a timed event, right? It's getting colder, and these guys want to either fish or cut bait, buy those things or not.
Right, yes, sir.
It's getting colder, they want to either invest in this or not. So what do we think an appropriate timeline is to review this and get it sorted already? Because it keeps kind of rehashed, or tough with that for a month. What do we think we can, we can successfully either say yes or no to this?
I mean, the, the application not only does have to go through the village board department, has to also go through the fire marshal as well, because they're seeing this as a temporary structure for six months.
Sure.
So that's, with that said, it has, they have to apply for that application as well. And then having, once I get that approval, I will issue a permit based on that approval.
Are you guys clear on everything you need to apply for? The fire marshal.
I can step to the microphone.
When we talked to the fire marshal, the fire marshal said, because of the type of structure, that it does not need any permits from them as long as there's no propane under the structure. The structure is electrically heated, they had no issue with it whatsoever.
Did, did you get something written from the fire marshal? Usually they do that.
I can get it.
I think you showed it for.
There was a, a conversation with them.
Yeah, please do that, that's important.
Get it, so I mean.
I think we must address all the issues. It's a structure.
Yeah, Mayor, I spoke to the fire marshal's office as well. They do need a permit for those, because they have temporary structures. So I spoke to chief fire marshal, and I'll speak to him again to clarify, so then you wouldn't have to get a permit.
The fire, I'm not saying that didn't happen, but I also spoke to the fire marshal, and I asked him specifically, because obviously it would be no issue for us to take permits out.
Yeah, there's no issue, they just need to approve it.
And he told me no.
Make sure everything's safe and, you know, met to a standard.
That's really my only concern, are we being clear with them on what they need? Or are we, like, just like circling along the same issue? Are you guys clear on what we need to get this approved?
No one has told us anything that we need to gather.
These comments, they have not been released yet. I've been waiting for this meeting for the release comments.
I've been waiting for this meeting for the release comments on, based on their submission. So now that more detail, we're moving forward. I'll submit the comments that they have to comply to and with, along with the fire marshal approval and application. And then we can.
So let's make it clear. Have they submitted the information you requested?
They, they submitted their original application, not the, not the comments.
So therefore you've done an analysis of these structures? So you have to give that information to the restaurant owners so they know what to do?
Yes.
Please. Right, thank you.
In addition, at whatever point you make a decision on it, the license agreement has to be executed. And I just need to know what terms to put into that license agreement. How long is it going to be? Are we lifting the requirement of no heaters? That there are a series of questions along those lines.
So let me ask the fellow board members. Provided these guys clear these hurdles, is everyone even in favor of this? Are we going to make them jump through hoops and then tell them they can't do it? We just got to get real.
I don't think it's jumping through hoops. They have to get, you know, uh, something written from fire marshal, right?
Sure. So they go through that process, they come back. Are we so clear with them?
Let me, let me finish if I may.
Yes.
So I think you're going to expel out from everything they need so they're clear. And then they're going to get the bat for us, right? And then we take it from there.
Yes.
I need to lose his point. From there, it's very, I mean, these guys are trying to run a business. We could probably indicate to them if it's likely to pass or not, should they satisfy all said requirements? Yes?
I think if they, you know, uh, satisfy the requirements of the fire marshal and what we're asking for, uh, then I think we, you know.
I would, I would be in group with that.
But I just don't want to let these guys say it. They're trying to run a business. They want to know whether or not, so about how much do these things cost? Fifty grand or something?
Forty thousand.
So you know what I mean? So I just want to know if you, they get through it and, and believe me, I'm a believer in the process of needing to get the required, uh, you know, approvals. But if they're going to get those approvals and they come back and say, we're not, we're not, you know, going to pass outdoor dining anyway, we sent them on a log because just, I just want to make sure that, you know, provided they do everything they're supposed to, there's a light at the end of the tunnel for them. Sounds like they're mine bees, so I'm happy.
We need approvals from the popular buildings.
Sure.
But the structures is safe. Zone has to review it. You have to review it. Fire department has to review it. If all those reviews are done and we pass muster, the information comes to the board. The board will decide.
It's fine. Mayor, I just, I'm certainly in favor. My only concern is that it's for another year. I mean, is everybody?
That's, that's what we discussed too, trustee Delaney.
Oh, so may that be for a year. Fine, okay, that, that's fine.
And don't forget this. All it says is a temporary structure. They're allowed to be out for six months.
I agree with you, Mayor. I, I just, I have.
Let's not go back to what we did before, please.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent. My second question is, as I read this, this only affects Navita and Water Zoo. Are there other applicants who want to extend past December thirty-first? I know they can't answer that question.
No.
But I've only.
They haven't gotten anybody else.
You haven't got anybody else? Okay, fine.
This is the only one in town that really does. It's the only application. It's the only application I understand.
So you'll do the research, gather it together, respond, introduce it to the board. Then we can act on it. Thank you.
So do you want to table this to the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? We'll move on to the non-genetic items.
Yes, the whole agenda writing is announced.
We're discussing non-genetic items only. So if anybody in the audience wants to come up and discuss the non-genetic item, please state your name and address. Anybody in the audience?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Marielle Mariello. This is my husband Andrew. We live at E T New Place. Um, we're here tonight to discuss an issue that I'm sure many of you are already familiar with. Um, we've had a discussion with Mr. Spazzi over this for the past month or so. Um, we found out through routine prenatal screening, uh, for my first pregnancy that I have lead poisoning, which they, uh, started a chain of events that basically resulted in the Nassau County Department of Health coming into our home, testing everything including the water. Um, when they tested the water, uh, they found that it had extremely high, uh, lead levels. For reference, the actionable limit is fifteen parts per million. Our highest level test center was one hundred and eighteen parts per million. Uh, we've now replicated those results three times over. Once more in Nassau County, once, uh, that we hired our own independent contractor to come in and sample the water, and then once through H two M through Garden City. Um, at this point, we've asked multiple times about any kind of action plan. We've also been being aware through people who have acquired tests from New York State's free testing program that there are other homes in the area that have also tested high for lead. Um, one which was even higher than our lead level. Um, my, even anecdotally, my parents live in the estate section. Um, my mom, uh, we found out about my lead level, started avoiding tap water. Um, and after three weeks of avoiding it, she went and had her plasma lead sample tested. So that's from her own blood. Um, and she had borderline lead poisoning as well. They do not have a lead service line. There's no lead in the home. I guess our question is, is there a plan to discuss this with residents? Um, we still have not identified a cause. Um, from the research that we've done, the conversations that we've had with various water specialists, uh, the best guess that we have is that it could be something to do with water treatment. Um, so I guess we're here tonight just to ask if any headway has been made, if there have been any updates. The last discussion that we had was that the wells had been tested, that they were negative. Um, but that's a very small component of a much larger problem. Um, so we're just looking for updates here.
Ralph, you were in business, sir.
Yes. Just to continue, Andrew, it was at the meeting, the EPA meeting. And as a result of his comments to me, which I passed on to Ralph, um, and Ralph would read in detail on, Ralph, why don't you?
Yes, so first of all, I did speak to your mother on October twentieth, I think it was. Um, it was the first information the village or myself had received on this topic. I spoke to, uh, Mrs. Smith, your mother? I forgot her last name.
Mr. Griffin.
Griff, that's Griffin, so. Mrs. Griffin, she called me and talked for a half hour. She explained to me, uh, very specifically and very detailed with your daughter Ariel and just, uh, Mrs. Ariel just explained. Um, I listened intently and then she was kidding herself. I said, "Mr. Griffin, I have to get off the phone. I need to call the health, county health department. I need to jump into action." So she gave me the contact name. I immediately called them and hung up. My next call was H two M. I asked them to test all of our active wells, because some of our wells are offline. All of our active wells where the water enters into the distribution system, which is the mains on the ground that comes into me, was tapped eventually. I, it was tested the next morning, started eight o'clock, testing twenty-four hours after the phone call. Those tests came back with lead and non-detect. In my earlier presentation on E P A, Mr. Horowitz, I mentioned non-detect is really a standard. It's not detectable. So, um, it doesn't mean we're entirely off the hook. The county is not identifying to us any actions that we need to take. Uh, they have not written their formal report. Um, the county called me back on the twenty-first that afternoon because the person I called was not the person I guess they wanted speaking to me. The person we used to speak to on, uh, health related matters called me back, William Provanta. His name is, he calls himself Bill. I had Bill, myself, Joe De Arrow from H two M, um, Jim Roberts from H two M. He used to run the New York City water system. And, uh, I know the gentleman, um, from H two M who deals with regulatory actions. Uh, his name is Paul Fields, that's his name. We discussed it at length. Um, they had conducted a test in the home. And as reported, it was high lead concentrations. I think the refrigerator filter had a hundred and eighteen parts per billion. Um, they asked them, they need us to do anything? We told them what we had done. Uh, they were very pleased that we were taking, taking this aggressive action, but it was not at their request or direction. We also scheduled with the Ariels to go in their home. I think that test was conducted on eleven-four, somewhere around there, Wednesday or so ago. Those tests, we had an extra day. We had them by the late Friday that came in. And I notified you on the tenth after, after I had Mr. De Arrow. Uh, we detected lead the same way the county did. I wanted to tell you about the test a bit, just to clarify a bit because when we talked to the Nassau County Health Department, they explained to us that the initial test they took in the home not only consisted of water, they tested utensils, pots, paint. So it's more than just water that you test as a potential source of lead. Um, that's one point that should be known. It might not should be water as a source. Number two, they told us that the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, in December of this year, next month, should be releasing new guidelines where the lead test is more robust. So instead of taking two fifty milliliters of water, they would take five liters. I believe the concept behind this more robust test is because the water that's in the plumbing of a house and sitting in the main, they want to clear that, so, I'm sorry, the service line, they want to clear that. So they want to get to the main water coming from the system. So the more robust test, uh, they, they grew over time. When they got to the fifth liter, I believe the levels were below the fifteen parts per billion, which is the threshold. So we talked to the county about that result. And their preliminary reporting to us verbally on the phone, again, it was not a long phone to my head, Mr. De Arrow on the second call with them. They are indicating, but they have not said that they believe the lead service line may be the primary culprit here, but this, I can't say that. It's not my investigation. All I know is the facts I have is that when I tested our water system, lead was not detected. It, I'm, I'm testing it every month. We're doing another test on the twenty-first of, uh, November, December, January. So I'm doing four tests on a test that the state requires, one seventy-three years.
In, in addition, as a result of the P O A meeting, uh, we brought it to my attention. I also talked to Ralph on Wednesday morning. And one of the things that he pointed out was, is there any possibility? And correct me if I'm saying this the wrong way. Is there any possibility that the steps we take to purify the water from the dioxide and everything else, could any of those steps or chemicals, whatever we do, have, be the cause of it? So Ralph has been in contact, and you can speak to this, Ralph. At, at our request, Ralph has been in contact with H two M. And I don't think they reported back to you, but asked them to look at that. If there's anything that we're doing that would cause corrosion when it got to the house. And we, we are in the process of doing that. I don't think you have an answer yet.
Just so you know, I do have a H two M call. In case there's a question, I can answer it that you need more detail on. Or if I, Joe, if I say something incorrect or stray from facts, I want you to jump in and correct me. So, number one, had your mother not called me, I would not have known that case. Because the county did not contact us based on, I believe your doctor reported in the law as a reportable thing. So the doc reported as you or she should have. They went to your home and scheduled a test. And they had the results, which I believe they, they verbally communicate to you because I'm taking a writing here. And which I don't prefer. Prefer it be written down because, because when you start speaking and hypothesizing, those hypotheses, I believe, have spread as fact throughout the community. And that they're now valid again. So that's just unfortunate reality of life. The thing is that I really feel for your position, I believe. Um, so anyway, they, they conducted the second test and they did find lead. And I sent an independent lab to me because I didn't want my employees or an H one employee conducting the test so that there was no question that was independent. So I, I sent Pace Lab, which is a state certified lab that we use for all of our testing, uh, to perform the test. I asked them to perform the same test that Nassau County performed on my refrigerator because the county's refrigerator filter had been changed, so it's going to come up with high levels anyway. So we did everything but the refrigerator test.
Just, just to clarify with that, um, even the water that came directly from the town, um, after a one-minute flush, um, and even after several minutes, was still up in like eighty, seventies.
Oh, no. And your house, by the way, because my water plant operator came to see me because, you know, we were discussing this as well. The, the one in on heat places on the East Side of the street, I believe it has on the West Side. So it's like a sixty-five or seventy-foot run just for the service line before it gets into my downtown plumbing. So that's a lot of water to clear. And I don't know the details of your home, but now you have low-flow faucets which are pushed to the same amount of water. One of these test versions, maybe the water's not, the timing, I don't know, might be stretched out because the water's not pushing through as fast. There's so many factors. The solder, in nineteen eighty-six, I think it was, they changed the solder rule. It couldn't be, it couldn't be fifty-fifty anymore. They had to be five percent lead and seventy-five percent zinc. I don't know the rules. All I know is that I'm sure most of the homes built before nineteen eighty-six have the old solder in there. I'm sure that homes, your home was built fifteen years before I was born. We know it has a lead service line. Um, so I've been asking the county, I have, I have a H two M researching the soon-to-be-released impolish EPA guidelines because if I'm going to start anything on a village-wide level, I need to know that if I have to go into a house or send someone into a house or ask you to have somebody in your house, I can know what data I have to collect because I can't go back two, three, four times to each house. So we're looking for an understanding of what the guidelines, besides the test that was conducted in your home by myself and the county, by Pace County. I'm trying to find out what it is they, they're going to be at expectance to do. I'm trying to come up with a communication plan for other residents. Uh, you know, in our annual report every May, there's a section there from the New York State that says lead service lines contribute lead to water, it's not say blah, blah, blah. You know, so that comes out every year. I know people won't read the report end to end, but. Um, so we're going to try to do our best to educate people. Once we identify the source or sources, we will act. The, the water department of the, the health department was very happy that we treat this aggressively. But I said, they still today, a month later, since I talked to your mom, that was the twentieth of October, twenty-eight days ago, they still haven't answered to do anything. We have, and we've, I've read emails to them. We've initiated all the phone calls with them. We have shared all of our test data with them and they have shared their test data with us. I did find out yesterday, I did an email from Mr. Provanta that New York State Health Department, they're about to release a report to you. The New York State called and said, we received a hundred tests from Garden City, of which twenty-five had high levels of lead and seventy-five didn't. I contend that if the water was contributing to it, that there'd be a hundred.
I would, I would disagree with that.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm just.
Twenty-five percent is a pretty large sample size. I mean, consider.
It is. So I asked, I, I asked Nassau County, do you have the addresses? No. Who conducted the test? We don't know. Were the tests conducted according to, were they done by residents with home test kits or were they done by labs? So there's all these questions.
Likely that is the case, but I think that people have been driven to request these free testing kits and, and seek this out on their own in the absence of any kind of guidance from the village. And I can definitely appreciate the need to wait for guidelines from the state. And I think this is, you know, not to like, you know, give a pun here, but a very fluid situation. Um, but at the same time, we're talking about a public health problem and I don't really think it's appropriate to wait till December for some kind of guidelines to trickle down to New York State.
We're waiting for recommendations from Nassau County?
But by not notifying people, I think it's that there's a potential.
Why, no.
That there's a potential.
Could I ask you, could I ask you a question? Have you guys tested your service line?
So we know, we know that our service line is a lead service line. We're also aware of the fact that the majority of the town has a lead service line. In any of the major, uh, instances?
I, I'm not sure that the majority is lead.
We don't know. I, I did ask.
Even if it's.
Just ask her and finish. Sorry, I just kept doing.
So, um, in any of the major iss- issue or episodes of lead contamination in water systems across this country, whether we're talking about Newark, Denver, Flint, the issue is not the lines. It's the treatment of the water. You've been in our conversations with water experts from Nassau County, from New York Environmental. Um, you can have lead lines and they're there for decades and they build up all these mineral deposits and it's safe to drink that water. But if the water coming in is corrosive, then it starts breaking down that protective barrier. Um, that's exactly what happened in Flint. The pH dropped from a treatment level of eight to seven point three at the worst of the crisis. Denver, Colorado treated their pH of their water to seven point eight. And then in March twenty-twenty, they started noting an uptake of homes testing for high lead. So they adjusted their pH to eight point eight. Boston and the suburbs of Boston treat their, buffer their water to a pH of nine point six to make the water safe. So I guess my, what I'm asking and what I think would be, you know, in my non-expert opinion, just the little research that I've had to do as a consequence of trying to protect my family and community, is for Garden City to, while we're waiting for these recommendations to come down, to have an expert consultant come in and evaluate how we're treating our water, what anti-prosive agents we're using, and whether or not treating the water to a pH of seven point six is appropriate when you have an aging water infrastructure.
Okay, so all these questions you're asking, we've been dialoguing on with the county and among ourselves. Uh, one of the things I've directed H two M to.
One of the things I've directed H2M to do is to do a corrosion control study, where the full chemistry of the water and treatment norms of the pH alkalinity. The last one that was done in Garden City was in the early nineties. I asked why are you in the nineties? That's probably when the lead encounter rule came out and gave everybody the. But it's not required annually or by annually, it's not required at all, so I talked to Nassau County about it, I said, "I'm going to do this because I'd like to have a new set of data." So, they said it's a good idea, so, again, my offer, they agree. So that's going to occur. We're catching, we're testing our inorganic compounds, they call them IOCs. We test them once a year. I believe our test, our annual test was conducted in August and September, it was fine. I'm having it conducted, then we did the lead test on October twenty-first, which was fine. I'm having the IOCs repeated this month, next month, and January, just to convince myself that there is nothing in the chemistry that is speaking out to us needs to be done. Again, Nassau County's an issue to report, they'll probably say change your lead line, they'll probably say change your refrigerated filter. They're monitoring our pH alkalinity, it's within the proper ranges, but nonetheless, we're trying to understand the phenomenon that occurred in your home and how it applies to others. The lead service line issue is not, you mentioned, a lot of homes may happen in Garden City. We have to do a tri-annual test to try to get a physical training. Every three years, New York State makes us test lead, we test thirty homes throughout the county. You have to hit a certain percentage to be in compliance, we met at seventeen and twenty. So the county tells us, "All your numbers are clear."
But it's interesting that when you expanded to a hundred homes just recently, that twenty-five out of a hundred.
We didn't do those tests.
No, I know, but those are the ones from the free New York State testing kits, but if you're talking about a sample size of thirty homes in a town with, the last number that I saw was like seventy-four hundred-ish.
Is that.
Yes, seventy-five hundred homes, that's a sample size of point zero zero four percent. And I don't really, you know, in a situation like this where there is a red flag, I think it warrants a further investigation and casting a broader net. And if we, you know, we take these hundred results from test kits that I've gone in at face value, we can see a twenty-five percent positive rate, which is high, that's definitely significant, twenty-five percent of seventy-five hundred.
So the state, the state has information, the state has information, the county received it yesterday afternoon, just after my phone call to them, they sent it to us, I sent it to H2M, I said, "Okay, now we have the information that has been gathered somewhere in the village from residents, we don't know how it was gathered, what was done, but it's pointing to this to be one thing." I said, "So I asked the county for information," I said, "I don't even know, I can't even contact these people to talk to them and see, you know, what, you know, so, like, I'm only, you know, so we're not sitting here waiting for the county." We acted on our own to test the water, we made an appointment going to your home, we're having H2M investigate the new guidelines so we can act on them before they even release, just make sure we capture everything that's going to be part of us. I have Giuseppe, the superintendent building, going through all of his records, historically back to nineteen twenty, wherever the records go, to see, to investigate plumbing permits and see, because, you know, the house, we have houses that have records that might have no plumbing permits, but anything without that data, we assume we have a lead line. If your house is built before nineteen seventy, you might have them, I don't know the thresholds. All I know is that I think everyone who's worried about a lead service line, recommend they have the plumber committee uncheck it. We're trying to figure out what communication, I've asked the county, how do you communicate this to a person like yourselves, or to a community, or to a neighborhood, how do you communicate this so that, you know, I don't create a panic disguise for?
I think you should, though, at a certain point, we have the stuff to come around. I don't believe there's a single bigger issue in the town. More and more contaminants and things are being discovered in everyone's drinking water online every day. They rush, you know, we get guidance to rush to treat them. As these guys are saying, there could be downstream effects to that. And I've said this before, and everyone throws a shoe at me when I say it, we should be selling our water system to experts who know what to do and know how to deal with these problems. And all you guys yawn and roll your eyes, but we are outmatched, get it? My wife, it's no secret, she has cancer, forty-five, stage four cancer, for no reason whatsoever. Colleen deals with same, similar issue for no reason whatsoever. So, what should we be doing? Yeah, say, "Hey, we've got some high lead levels. Maybe you guys should contact your plumber, if you suspect it, get a home kit, check it. Call your plumber, see if you've got a lead line feeding your house." Why would we not say that?
This is an extremely time-sensitive issue. For me personally, the very highest risk of exposure is the first trimester of pregnancy. If we can even protect a few families from having a dangerous metal contaminant, potentially give their child cognitive and behavioral disability for the rest of their lives, I think it's worth potentially spreading alarm, this is something to spread alarm for.
Louis, I agree with you.
David, why don't we do this?
No, we have a distribution.
We have a distribution system in the village. We have water mains, the water mains are not made of lead, am I correct?
It's graph.
Okay. The distribution, the water mains connect to your house, there's a service line. Depending on the distance of your house, the line can be a hundred feet, fifty feet, the diameter can be different, it could be two inches, three inches, whatever it is. Did you say you renovated your house?
We purchased our home after it had been completely renovated.
It was totally renovated?
Yes.
Was the service line?
No, we know that the service line is the original.
Did they have, for example, exotic fittings, plumbing fittings that came from another country?
Not at our home.
You have to look at all those conditions, obviously, as a homeowner. And I agree with you, that should be posted, homeowners should check. First thing, when I heard about this, I said, "Ralph, check the wells to make sure there's no lead." That was the first thing he had to do. Second, I said, "Everyone should call a licensed plumber to check to see if they have a lead line."
For sure.
Right?
We should recommend.
Just check it, and if you do have one, then you should make some arrangements to move that lead line, right? And then provide also household, in addition to that, once you make the change, provide household, if there's other contamination.
I get, I get it, obviously, I agree. I just don't think we all can put a finger on exactly where even this is coming from. And I understand we say, "Yeah, there's a lead supply line to the house," I get it. But the point is, we go, "Oh, none of the mains have any lead pieces, right, Ralph? Ralph, do you know that for sure? Are you going to bet your life on that? Hell no, absolutely not. Absolutely not, we don't know what's under there. And my point is, is that, again, we keep, the state, we all know, we all that, the state basically crammed the one for dioxin mitigation down everyone's throat before we even said, "Hey, what's one for dioxin?" Remember, five years ago, no one even knew what that was, and it's in everything, okay? It's in Tide, it's in shampoo, it's in everything, right? So we got the UV lights, we're pumping in the hydrogen peroxide. To their point, maybe it's, you know, we're rattling the cage downstream and, you know, citing some of the natural barriers that had built up over the lead components over the years, and now they're being exposed again. We have no, but the last thing, we have no way of knowing. And my only point is, you know, we've got this water department, we've had it for a very long time, and you know what? When it was as clean and easy as, you know, dropping a straw down there and slurping up what we need, it seems like you can run a neighborhood water department. I think we're a little outmatched now. I think we should start to really consider either a complete different look at this or selling it to a professional water authority that has scientists on staff and mitigation efforts and understands really what they're up against, because we do not.
I disagree with you.
I gotta say, I wanted to say, first of all.
Ralph, may I make a suggestion? We know that, we have already asked H2M to take a look at what they suggested, that what we're doing is causing some of the problem. In the interim, why don't we put a flyer out to everybody, just outlining this, so that everybody in the village knows officially from us that we suggest testing.
On the county website?
And the village website, and in your mayors' town, and let everybody get tested.
I also did get a free kit with the others.
People need to be.
That'll help you, I think we need, I think we need, we also need an expert consultant, right? An expert consultant. Before, before we make the leap and sell our water system to someone else, we need a real expert.
I'd be, I'd be opening the door for anyone to want to come and buy it, but I just want, I just want to state, trust me, Nuno, not to argue, but our operation is putting out a good product, we need all the standards.
I know you do, I just, remember when I say that, I'm not dog in the water. I'm just saying, it's so complex now. You know, we, there are harmful agents in the water that we don't even know about yet. It's true, one more that I'll say, we didn't even know it was.
The lead reports are.
I'm being honest with you, I don't even give the water to my dogs. And that's not a joke.
There are, there are unregulated things, I mean, the water report talks about things that are regulated, things that are unregulated. The EPA regulates some things, and the New York State takes, like dioxin, they don't have a standard.
It's still an outlaw usage, isn't it? They're still allowed.
New York State standard.
It's still on label.
No, so dioxin in New York State is one part pavilion, in Alaska it's seven parts pavilion, in Pennsylvania it's six parts pavilion, Connecticut it's seven parts pavilion, New Jersey it's one, you know, so it's like, it's all over the EPA, it's not.
And that's my point, is that it's so complex. I'm not criticizing, I know you do everything that New York State wants us to do, and then some. My point is, at what point do we just say, "The operation of this and the cause and effect is just too great, and we need outside help." And we, you know, this can't be Ralph's part-time gig is to run the water. It's getting a little nutty now. And, you know, it's, you hear stories like this, this freaks me out. And, you know, we talk about, you know, how our property values are affected by this or that, or how about if we can't treat the garden water?
And rush it.
I think we gotta, yeah, I think.
I'm not sure it's, I'm not sure it's a treatment issue at this point, you shouldn't, you shouldn't.
No, no, listen, well, we don't know. We don't know if it's the line, we don't know if it's treatment, I don't know if, you know, there's a big lead ball stuck or something like that from the civil board, I have no idea what it's caused, it needs to use.
So we, so we get a consultant to come in and investigate this whole thing.
We have H2M.
I know we have H2M.
We've already started.
I know we have H2M, and they're outside.
It's your quarters, maybe if we come up with a framework where we say, "All right, we're going to go around and check all suppliers," or by a certain date, you've got to figure out whether or not you've got a supply line that has lead, or you know, again, I'm just, except for I'm not a water expert, but we need, we need a plan, and we have to start being proactive.
If I may add one more thing, in the same spirit of not having H2M test the water in our home, having an independent company, I do think in the sake of transparency and not having a conflict of interest, that I think it would make everybody feel better if it were a completely independent consultant to come in and do the testing.
And say what you mean, not H2M?
Not H2M, yes.
So, I mean, just one thing that you want immediately, do we all agree to just put out a public service announcement about lead in water, encouraging people, it's in our water report anyway that people should be, but, you know, let's highlight it because we have this information right now.
Very helpful is either the mayor's palm, obviously, or my stuff, but also put where people can get that free New York State kit in there, and then, and then if people read this in the paper and they want to check it out, that they could do so. East Alabama can help us do that.
We don't need to vote, we need to. We need to vote, we need to bring it on doing something.
I can, I don't have, I don't have another independent lab, number one, select, and number two, I don't have funding for it, so I'll have to come back to this board, but that's until September ninth, so you want, you want to authorize me to?
You mean for the free kits?
Not the kits, I'll contact.
It was crazy, you know?
I mean, they're recommending we have someone independent outside of our own H2M consultants, so you're talking about hiring another.
No, 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 their independent consultant is to analyze our whole situation. What I believe that's what they said, I believe what they're saying is independent kits that we can get for free from your.
What I think you're asking for is an independent group to test the water. Other than H2M, am I correct in what I understood you to say?
But test the water, but to test all the, what Mr. Nuno was saying, all the components of the water, how we're treating the water, whether the pH that we're treating the, buffering the water to is appropriate, given the age of our water infrastructure.
We can look for one, but I'm not sure. All our tests, all our tests are, we take water samples and they're tested by an independent New York State server. H2M doesn't do any testing, they don't take the samples, they're taking samples down on request for this particular issue, but our regular testing is done by our own people. You know, and then they, I mean, there's lots of testing, too, they don't just turn on tap, they have to.
I mean, there's certainly water consultants and specialists in this area of the country, New York, New York, New Jersey has.
I'm not, I'm not close there, I'm just saying, we have consultants that, of the system, the treatment of the water meets standards, with this particular problem, they've been partnering with me, Nassau County, like I said, would knock on their door, asking them, "What do you think is going on?" You know, if you, if you're familiar with your saints, or kitchen aerators, there could be soldering caught in there, that is. You know, because pulses be flushed, you have a little, there's soldering there, they're all through your system that's contributing. There's so many little factors besides pH alkalinity, so nonetheless, there could be sorbent factors combining into perfect storm, and it's probably house by house specifically at home. So, what I'm saying is that, if I test, if I test the water, then I'm pushing it out into the mains and it's like free, that's a good sign, to Mr. Nuno's point, I didn't put the mains in the ground, I know they're made of steel and concrete, but they don't solder the mains, so, you know, the only place I know that has lead in the system, and that's in the fire hydrants, the indoor fire hydrants, but they don't interact with the water that's going to the homes, they're only turned on when you open them up and the water comes out, so that's a closed area, and those are all brass fires, they're not contributing to it.
Also, Ralph, we're certainly not a first municipality to experience lead. Do we do any benchmarking studies?
Can I tell you, trust me, I don't want, what I don't want to do.
I know, it's the difference.
No, no, I don't want to revendicate, I've been asking the county, what can I do? What have you done on the communities we run courses, what do you tell other homeowners? How do I go about, besides educating people, I've asked them for a template form letter, I have H2M working on a piece, we now, a piece that Trusty Flannigan just mentioned, we're trying to put together a communication piece. We can mail it to people, go on the website, send it to P W S, everyone, communicate, but at the end of the day, the service lines are owned by homes, so if the service line problem, they can filter out the water, they can replace the service line, they can run the water for ten minutes to clear, getting the lead out of there, there's things that the EPA and state recommend you do if you have a lead issue. But right now, everyone seems to be pointing to the water department as the problem, and it should be downstream in the home, so since we don't know, we are exploring all avenues, I have not excluded anything as a point of research for more to discuss tonight.
Is there any precedent of, like, let's say we do survey, and we find out thirty-five percent of the homes in town have lead lines?
That's what I'm having Giuseppe look in now.
Let's say we find out, is there any, like, similar to the other grants we got for the one for dioxin? Is there a state funding we can go after?
This is a good question.
Or grants we can get, because that's actually a lot of, to change those out, and I'm not so sure.
You're talking about, you're talking, maybe these budgets, five to ten, fifteen thousand dollars of a line.
Perhaps.
Depending on the length of the line.
That's what I mean, so is there like?
So, that's not, the lines are not ours.
No, I know, but that's what I, what I'm asking.
Getting some help for the.
Yes, so in the community, either they went home, I received a flyer, it's a homeowner from the city saying, "We want you to test," they want the homeowners to go downstairs and scratch their plates, come in and see if it's lead. If it is, we might be able to get you funds, so I looked at the brochure. I called New York, I contacted New York State, so I sent an email, I said, "I'm the bill administrator in New York Garden City." This is like the weekend after I told your mother. I said, "I want to do this for my community, are funding available?" I wrote back a Monday, "There's no funds available," so that was a dead end. But now I'm looking into this big infrastructure grant that the president out, are in this new thing, are they funded for communities? I asked H2M to look for that, you know, it's not, it's not like you pick up the phone and say, "I need fifty million dollars." You know, this is a multimillion dollar project, we're to do it, if individual homes do, it'd be quite expensive. Like I said, it might be, if you have a lead line and you can't afford to change it, which might be the case for someone with a seventy-foot lead service line, maybe in the household system is the solution to solve that problem at that location. I'm not recommending, I'm just saying that there might be multiple ways to attack the problem on an individual home basis and community strategy, but unless we're going to, and we're assuming that the lead line is the full contributor, I don't think the county knows that, I talked to them yesterday.
I, I think that part of your homework, which is considerable already, should be what are our options as homeowners to, for mitigation of that? Is there a filter you can find? Can we get a deal on it? Can we buy in those village, can we buy them in, can we get a nice price on it? I don't know what it is, but, and maybe even find out if there's someone else other than H2M, or if you're comfortable. We just got to have a bunch of. We're getting a flight done pretty much every.
And by the way, H2M is not, it's not like there's an H2M family that have a forum team, like Jim Roberts came from New York City, these people come from other firms, and, you know, they're a collection of professionals who have to work at H2M today, so it's not like it's one line set.
I'm not criticizing at all, I just mean, if they're already focused on. I'm not criticizing at all. I just mean, if, if they're already focused on this, maybe there's another place that maybe is, you know, a little bit more focused on the, the end user or the consumer products, and let's get them in here, you know?
I've heard everything you've said tonight, believe me, uh, Mrs. Ariella. I am working as fast as I can. I've reached out to professionals, I've reached out to the county. I'm doing my own research. I took everything in my own work and said for a baby, I took it as absolute truth on good faith, even though I had not heard that from the county yet. I am anxious to see what they say, because they told me, they told me there's no lead in your paint, in your pots, in your cancels. We talked extensively about this. Um, and, um, so, I know it on the end of the story yet. Uh, I will get a communication piece out to people to alert them to this danger. Uh, even though it's been out there in literature before, and available to people, I will make sure that, and I talked to you about this last night, Mayor. I, I, I spoke to the mayor last night, because we have fire safety committee meetings from everybody, I thought. And I thought that, you know, there's a lot of things that might be outside of our controls of government that people should know about. Smoke detectors are part of the outside of Texas in their homes. How many times have you heard of it? Who really does it? I said, maybe we should get people's face, let service lines, uh, lock your cars, for the police departments in the Department of the Guard, you should lock your cars. There might be something that you want to speak.
Excuse me, um, Joe Darrow would like to speak.
Oh, Joe, go ahead.
Do you, Mayor, do you want him to speak?
Yes. He's, he's refused to talk.
Joe, go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I just, I just want to, I just want to mention a couple of things. You know, federal funding, so supposedly there's, related to the, the new lead copper rule, there's gonna be a lot of fun for, for lead line replacements. Uh, it's part of the reason why, like, my discussions with Ralph, was to try and get out ahead of regulation, to identify the lead lines and, and get the first parts of the requirements down, so that if funding does come out here, you're well in advance of, of a lot of people. And, uh, the, the funding would be easier to get, because you have stuff in place already. So, I don't know how much money is coming down with the line, but hopefully, supposedly a lot, and, you know, how it's getting, how it's getting sorted out and distributed to the states is another story.
And Joe, Joe, just to, just to expand on that, from our conversations with the county and the few, it's not just identifying the lead service lines. We have to take an inventory of all these service lines in the community, not just identifying one type of line, brass lines, copper lines, right? The whole inventory.
The first step is take inventory of the service lines, right? And then once, once you know that, then you move on to, to, to an evaluation of, of the lines, and whether they, they should be replaced, and, and other things. And in copper, uh, certain, they changed the rules for requiring a, a corrosion control study, which are not required right now if you have under fifty thousand population, depending on what your action levels you hit, and, and, I mean, it's, I don't wanna get too deep into that, but, but, but right now corrosion control study is not required, but, but, as you mentioned, that we're gonna do one anyway, just in case, just to look at the key issue out on the water, and to see how it's affecting the lead, those lines. I will say that the AOP, the water performance testing and all idle testing, uh, has no, has really no effect on, you know, gases, pH alkalinity, uh, really most of the, the, the major corrosion, corrosion problems, uh, AOP really doesn't have any influence in that, so you change the, the properties of that.
What, what would prevent us from starting that, that survey of the lines? Anything?
They're, they're identifying, because it's, it's, the survey sounds like, hey, do you have a copper line, a brass line? The idea is essentially avoid being a car and sorry, if it's, if we do a survey, they might need four pieces of furniture in the house, I don't know. So we're trying to identify what the, I've asked for the guidelines, I asked the county for the guidelines, they said all we have is PowerPoints. Joe's team has the guidelines, and they dissected them and understand them, so he's sending me not only the guidelines, but what the specifics are about that survey. So we, that's all, I was sort of the board asking for money for, 'cause the survey, do I hire a third-party company to knock in everyone's home, like we did when we changed water heaters? I don't wanna rely on the homeowners to go downstairs like Lenko's and scrape it with a, a penknife and size it lead. I wanna have an expert, a plumber or some team.
And what's the timeline usually, Joe, on a, on a full survey? How long does that usually take?
Uh, well, to be honest, we haven't done it, so.
You've never done a, a, a village-wide survey like that?
Survey of services.
Yeah.
Not, not, I haven't done it in the late eighties when I first went in, but...
I, I don't mean Garden City, I mean ever, anywhere.
Yeah, not, not too many, yes. I mean, I, I have to go, but it shouldn't take, you know, once you get a certain place to go out, it shouldn't take that long. It's just a function of how many houses, okay?
Beginning to get it.
It's just a house.
And Mr. Roberts, Jim Roberts, did send me, um, a, a, a letter a couple weeks ago about how such a survey would be conducted. So, you know, we're trying to gather the pieces, but we have some answers here. I don't have all the answers tonight, I'm sorry.
Sure, no, no, I, I don't, but if you had all the answers, it would be a much better conversation. Uh, so we can agree, though, we're gonna post something, but also have a, have a life. We believe the first step to identifying the issues and also, along the way, it's a good thing to have, should funds come down the road, is a survey. Do we, do we start aligning ourselves on, on thinking about a village-wide survey?
Yes, that's, that's what we're planning to put together the company board, but I don't have it for tonight.
No, 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 no.
So you could, you could.
But that puts you down in the...
If, if the board, if the board feels it's appropriate, they can do the seeding rather than what I said tonight. If you could award some amount of money for me to, uh, of course, clear with you before you do it, but you pre-authorize it now. Uh, Joe, what do you think a survey would cost? Could you guys give me a, a order of magnitude number of what it might cost to do a seventy-four-hundred home survey, plus businesses too?
Yeah, the, the amount of time it takes to go into a house, how many you can do, I mean, if you go by the water meters, when they install the water meters, you know, the meter is the way that I have to make appointments to go to everybody's house.
No, I know, that was, that was a million-dollar project.
And, and, and how long would that?
Water meters was a little more, but now it's just labor, really, it has, there's no, there's no cost to it.
How long did it take to replace the meters?
The meters, back in two thousand sixteen, it probably took all summer, because people would cancel appointments and...
Yeah.
And, and some people had, uh, they had service lines that were not good, we weren't touching, they had to fix them.
Yeah, I remember. My house was one of those.
Yeah, it was drawn out, but I, I, it was really a matter of, 'cause you have seventy-five hundred homes and businesses, it took a while. It was probably a six-month project, all, all, all. But I think this is a little quicker, we're not changing meters.
Yeah.
Uh, and I think, you know...
We certainly could put the information out, and, and people should start test getting now, like, call their plumber.
Yeah, well, look...
As an, as an immediate step.
Yeah, so if, if, so let's say, let's say a person sitting in the audience here tonight calls the state on the loan, gets a kit sent to them and tests, okay, have lead? Uh, what, so now next up is, you know, you call the county, and there's a county that wouldn't test now, or they, and I've been asking the county this, and said, so, these hundred people who tested and twenty-five who had a lot of lead, what happens now? Are you guys gonna test? Are you expecting me to test? Are you expecting the homeowner to? You know, so they haven't clarified that for me. If I had the answers, I'd be already doing it, and you would have gone about it already. You should know also, that after I called H2M on, on the twenty, or the last time I tested my water, I, I wrote a full email to the board identifying my conversation with the mother. So I've kept everyone involved. The thing is, to just say to the community, there's a lead problem out there, and not be able to describe the parameters or the facts, is a very scary thing for, for anyone, because I don't have, like, I don't have the answer. You have all the information about your home, even about your medical condition that was told me. Everything I know doesn't help me solve your problem right now. So to open it up to twenty-two thousand people, these seventy-five hundred homes, based on, you know, facts is a very, uh...
I think, I think our concern came where we retested and we reproduced results four times, and then we also remade other homes in the neighborhood that had, had high lead, and we brought that to the village's attention, that we received a letter stating that, you know, we've complied with everything the county and the state have asked us to do without a further action plan. We just want timelines and an action plan.
So by the way, uh, the only, the only part of compilation of that letter was because when we conducted the test on November fourth, and we found lead, as the county did, as a water supplier, I am required by law to give you that form letter with all the details. That was the requirements piece. Nobody else has asked us to do anything. That was directed by existing, oh, the county's not asking us to do anything today. Everything we're doing and researching and discussing here tonight has been our initiative as a water department and as consultants on behalf of the board and residents in this village. So we were waiting for the county to tell us, I'd love them to say, here's the smoking gun. I don't have a smoking gun.
And I know, I expect it will take some time, and that's why I'm happy to hear that you will notify people, at least, and look at a memo, that this is an concern. Um, even if it's only for twenty-five percent of the town, twenty-five percent of a lot of families, it's a lot of children, it's a lot of, it's a lot of people who are impacted by this.
So, yeah, it's a lot of bad water, twenty-five percent, so please keep us updated.
As long as you know.
Update on, on, you know, what you guys find, you know, I'm sure any information you guys come up with can help.
Mrs. Ariella, on my way home tonight, I had tears in my eyes. I called my niece, who's a pediatrician, John. I asked her about how your filtration load and the blood speed, and how it comes out of your bone, like you know, this man who dated, I, I got a, a course in this stuff on the way home. Uh, I was very concerned, and so...
Alright, so then, uh, the notification will be sent out, and then in terms of the corrosion testing that you mentioned?
I already authorized your report.
Okay, so when, when can we expect?
I don't know how long it takes. We've been doing, we've been testing pH alkalinity every, since October fifth, every week, 'cause we had a blue water condition that we were hearing about, and we were trying to understand the dynamics of that. And it's only coming out of one building, and so we honestly thought it was building-specific, because we can't replicate it anywhere else. Um, so, um, that report is still pending, but we're still, every time, I put a special email out, it's out there for all water issues, uh, for brown, blue water. And I've had like three blue water complaints in the last seven weeks, both of them filled bathtubs, and one was ice cubes I got yesterday, two ice cubes every whole train. I don't know what's going on. It's, 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 it's a hard problem to solve, because it's not consistent, it's not predictable. And so it's, we're chasing all these different ghosts, while they're related, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's the value in how we're a consultant.
Yeah, so. I appreciate that. I did speak for both, you know, anyone, multiple times, so, I, well, you know, we will do whatever we have to do and we can do.
Thank you.
Any other residents?
We live in St. Rayna. I live on Heath Place. If it wasn't for them to send out a text to us, we wouldn't acknowledge it was a problem. My water is being tested tomorrow, um, and a lot of the families on that block have double and triple filters on their water, incoming water, they were telling me. The feller across the street told me the other day, he had his complete line replaced, lead line, and it was super expensive. So unless you're not a patient, um, it, it's really a big problem. All of us have sent for the free kit. It came back within three days. It goes, I'm sending mine to Court, Washington. It gets two vials that you take at a different time, barely close together, so we'll see where it goes, but, um...
You're, you're on the, you're on the eastern end.
I'm on the opposite side of them, yeah.
I was talking to your house nine years ago.
Yeah, and actually, you can still see where Mark had his line replaced, because it's right up against our side of the street. That's where the line runs. But don't forget, we've had all the construction going on, the old Sears building, everything is being churned up there, I'm sure. Um, we had that big fire, you know, on Washington. We've had lots of things going on around that could affect the water. I don't know, I'm not a water expert.
Well, don't forget, we, we just finished the tower.
The tower offline.
Right, so follow my line, thank you. Where are we getting pressure from?
We're getting, believe me, I know you don't.
No, let's go, yeah, let's, for the benefit of everyone, where are we getting our pressure from?
We're getting our, getting our pressure from the...
The speaker's on micro.
So ordinarily, the water tank that we're replacing, we're actually gonna fill it with water in the next three weeks, by the way. The water, the water pressure in the system usually comes from the atmosphere, that's why the tank is so high. With the tower offline, you're only, you're only gonna maintain pressure sufficient enough to provide drinking water and firefighting capability is through the booster pumps. So when pressure drops in a section of town, the booster pumps nearest to that will pump up and ramp up the pressure until it stabilizes. So when people turn on their sprinkler systems or pour in, or they shower in the morning, and whatever they're doing, the pressure's fluctuating. Which, by the way, stirs of sediment in the lines, that's why we get so many ground water complaints. I can't wait for the, until we sell the water pump. I can't wait till the tower, I can't wait till the tower comes back online, because that'll calm down the system, it'll stabilize the atmospheric pressure, and the booster pumps will play their normal role of just taking the water out of the tanks and putting it into the system. They won't be applying pressure.
Right, but to your point, starting up sediments, we've basically been going for five years.
I'm well aware, but it's gotta be every year, I mean, this is a big problem, when it just...
We're actually waiting to them.
And we should have been notified, if it wasn't for them to send it out. I sent it to everybody, and I got it from somebody else from a different part of town. One person has tested water at least eight times. I mean, they're on top of it, but it shouldn't be, we're only one block long. And we're gonna fight, I mean, there's gotta be an answer to this somehow, and I appreciate your help and going ahead.
I forget your name, but, but, so, so, the thing is that, your side of the street, you're right on top of the mains on the, on the east side. So when you test your water, at each of those in the test, you're, the water flushing through your system, it came from the main to your house quicker. I'm assured that the catch is sufficient. When they test their water on the other side of the street, they need a lot more time to get to my main to test the main. So the more the water testing is in the service line in the house, probably, it's exposed to sog or the lead. So these, so that's why each house is different, that's why the test, the tests tell you, there's a problem, but it tells you wherever it is. And that's, that's what we're experiencing.
But it might be in the piping, because I have lots of copper, all my heating system and everything.
Uh-uh, it's a number.
I have had pinholes galore, and it's all being replaced.
And I think Mrs. and Mrs. Ariella also said that the pipes, the pipes get coating inside over the years, like a patina. And that's why they indicated pH could play a, a role, a negative role, but that's, that's, uh, that's another thing, that there's protections that are occurring the way the town works.
Well, thank you.
Any other comments on management pilots?
Hi.
Please state your name. Should you mute, if you...
Please unmute yourself.
Please mute, unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. I'm unmuted now, sorry. Okay, thank you. One, no lines on here. Thank you. Hi, my name is Stephanie Threeflockes. Um, I live on one seventy Brooklyn, in the state session. Um, we're joining, joining tonight's board of the group meeting, because we actually know Mary Ellen, uh, previously, but we saw her post on, uh, the Garden City Moms and Dads group, and immediately were, uh, you know, impacted by the fact that someone else that we know has been impacted by lead in the city. So we haven't reached out to the city specifically, but we recently, earlier this year, were in contact with the county about our son having lead poisoning. Um, at his first birthday, um, timeframe, they did the test, and he registered positive. We immediately moved him, removed him from the house. I moved back home with my son to my parents' home in Chicago for five months, during an extensive renovation of our house, uh, multiple tests run, again, by third parties, as well as the county. Um, and basically, uh, at the time, we felt, or multiple tests came back and said that it was dust-related. However, we just had another third party come back in and test our water, based on the results that we've been seeing with Mary Ellen, as well as multiple comments that came throughout the post that she made out to the Garden City Moms and Dads group. So we just wanted to kind of go in on this and help raise awareness and make sure that it is being addressed in the town, because what we went through this year with my son, you know, there are a lot of old homes in this town, but we also wanted to make sure that it isn't a larger city issue.
Thank you. Any other comments? We have Bob again? Put him on. Bob?
Yeah, good evening. I, I had the, the issue with my water at one time, too. Uh, I had a plumber come in, the, the first morning, it threw out, he didn't know what he was talking about. I came in, he said, I'd like to replace that lead line that you have going to the street. And I went down, and the main line comes to the house, it put a piece of sandpaper, it broke it all over, over the pipe. And it turned out to be a nice powder color, a nice like powder. But eventually I did have a line change, and one thing that I didn't realize, that he told me, is that lines under the ground are attacked by electrolyte... is that lines under the ground are attacked by electrolysis. When you get these small pinholes in, in the line or anything else, that's true electrolysis. That's what's causing the little hole. By the time I had my line pull out, uh, I had it from my house to the street. It, it looked like a yard, a large yellow, it had somebody hold it. And he says, oh, it is, that's what happened. So, electrolysis in the ground, going to the little pinhole. So, and also, you're saying that you're treating the water with, with ozone and oxygen and so on. Uh, it's not always water in the lines, it's usually just the air in the line. And oxygen, those rusted lines or connections. So, that's, that's also a possibility where you might, you can get some fentanyl strong, uh, just natural causes of, of chemical reactions within the line itself. But the spin holes are, are, what I understand is true electrolysis. Just to give you some information of what I lived through.
Thank you, Bob. Any other comments on Zoom or the audience?
Mr. LeBert, do you want to speak?
I don't want to have a comment on water, so I would.
Yeah, you can come on and speak.
No, but I'd like you to finish that subject. There are a lot of.
Any other comments on, on the water issue? Okay, Tom, you're welcome back.
I have a simple issue. So, I, uh, to take us back, we know the board is now amending, appealing a particular statute of the building code, which imposes penalty fees on existing permit holders who seek to legalize work. So, that process has been made clear to me. I think it's clear that it does not apply to residents who seek permits to install new air conditioning units. And I am such an applicant, so I'm seeking to get a permit to install a new air conditioning unit and pay the fees. I recently went to the building, so the tenant asked him if I, he would issue me such a permit in light of all the discussions that we've had and the revisions that's supposed to take place with this particular section of the code, which applies to existing permit holders. And he told me he could not. So, that I would have to pay a penalty fee of $2,000. But we've had all the discussions about this. So, I would like the mayor to take some action to have a resident like myself obtain a building permit, which clearly I'm entitled to. So, here I am. I'd like to get it done before the winter sets in. Otherwise, I, I don't know where I am to go, I, I think.
Tom, I've, I've asked the building superintendent to look into this.
Sorry?
I've asked the, I've asked the building superintendent to look into this, and he's done a very thorough analysis. Giuseppe, do you want me to comment about this? If necessary, can you?
Mayor, as per the board's request, um, as, as the emails I've sent over to all of the board and himself, as far as the research that we've done, um, you know, my team and I have done an extensive, I mean, extensive research, 67 municipalities, um, as far as their, um, fees and their requirements, what they ask for applications. Um, 67, uh, 20, 20, uh, with those, um, with, with that review, 23 out of the 67 are two times the fee. 16 out of the 67 are three times the fee, like the village of Garden City. So, we're about 24% of that. Um, there's one village that's four times the fee. There's seven, seven out of the, you know, 67 that have no fee but are in, speaking about doing a fee, because there, there is such a thing that they're requiring. So, they're, they're looking into, into doing that. Uh, they haven't set forth a number, but they're looking to do, if not two, at least three times the fee, depending on, um, what, what they choose to do on that. Uh, 20 out of the 67 are various fees. Now, various fees mean they're, they're different percentages. On some occasions, they're more than three times the fee, if you do the mathematics on, on a, a cost per construction, uh, per project. So, uh.
This is all residential work?
It's, it's all residential work, yeah. Um, some villages charge more for construction, some, uh, for commercial, some are equal.
But my question, I think, Mr. LeBert just posed, is this, how does he get a building permit? Based on this situation?
Mr. LeBert, he has to file for a mechanical, an electrical permit, and pay three times the fee, because he doesn't have the benefit of a building permit. So, I cannot be here to waive any fees. I have no proof and documentation that there is a, a permit to that. So, in order to, to do that, he has to file for a mechanical and electrical permit.
So. Based on the?
Based on the permits and the code of section 4-2017.
So, but that's not the point. We're not talking about fees, we're talking about the law. I spent a fair amount of time.
I understand.
If we read the statute, it says every existing permit holder, every permit holder who seeks to legalize work has to comply with this penalty clause.
We discussed, we discussed the concept of a permit holder. Yes, we've done that.
I understand that, but the point is, I'm not interested. The law says it doesn't apply to me. I, I think it passed that.
It doesn't apply to you, because you, when you're applying, you're not a permit holder. That's what you're saying.
I'm an applicant, man. I'm an applicant. The statute, I can tell you that, but I don't want to get involved in, in discussions with lawyers and others. But the point is plain language of the statute. You've gotta start, this is where I was three months ago. You have to start with the language of the statute. Mr. B, legal counsel, when I put that question to him twice at the last meeting, he simply said, "It's the policy of the building department." So, we keep circling back. So, somebody, I, I, that's the issue. Does the law apply to me as it stands?
Well, that's a question.
That's, that's the issue. He asserts it is. I, I can't persuade him, he's done it. So, you'll have to resolve this. It's not how many feet, how many dollars you pay, and you're violating the law.
I understand, Tom. Let's, I want to get this resolved for you, Tom, and for everyone else.
As for all of us, I think.
The way it's written, it states permit holder, correct?
It does, yes.
Right, so, are we addressing him as a permit holder or as an applicant?
Or is he applying for a permit that he doesn't have currently? So, he's got to apply to the meeting of you.
He's saying he's applying for a new system.
Well, it's not entirely correct, because he, he's applying for a new condenser. The HVAC system is already currently in that, in the house. So, we have to inspect it.
We're placing the whole.
The components of the system. So, he's applying for one component of the entire system.
So, he's a permit holder, not an applicant?
He's, he's good on being an applicant when he files a permit that he's requesting.
Look, this is, this is an exercise in the English language. If, if you.
I understand perfectly. Good, you want to discuss the idea of a permit holder versus an applicant? Otherwise, we're, we're going here all night.
Well, have language controls.
I'm not sure how much more I can add to the discussions that we've had over the last several board meetings. In the first instance, uh, the building superintendent has construed the building code in a way in which, in order to become the permit holder, a permit would be issued for the installation of the condenser, which in turn requires a mechanical and an electrical. Simultaneously with the issue of that permit, he would instantly be a permit holder and subject to the payment of a legalization fee of three times, uh, the fee he should, the permit he should have had at the beginning. The building department has made what I think is a reasonable interpretation of that code to say, "We're not going to grant you the permit till you pay the fee." I'm prepared to say that that is a reasonable construction of the code. I have already supplied to the board, though I think it not necessary. I have supplied, provided a draft of a local law that would clarify, to say that this is intended to mean not only someone who at this instant is a holder, but someone who is an applicant to become the holder. And at such point as the board wishes to consider that legislation, a public hearing can be scheduled. In the meantime, the building superintendent's position is one which I believe is a reasonable interpretation of the code, and that's where we are.
So, may I suggest to you that that's an unreasonable interpretation of the code? Because if you read the code, in other instances, it talks about filing for a permit, there's a process. It doesn't talk about existing permit holders with respect to the rest of the code. And we've already been through this discussion where the existing permit holder, a section of the code, was to deal with the problem of open permits in 1916, 17. It's tough to be 90, because you, it's hard to get used to the 2000, where we are today. But anyway, so the point is that the whole section was dealt with a particular situation, that it dealt with open permits. The section itself deals with open, deals with existing permits. The language does not say applicant. You can't twist, torture, and, and reverse language in some way to get to that. And, and for the village council to do that, I find very, uh, I think that's, that's just bad statutory interpretation. All right, so, and we know that, okay? We know that there are termination sections. So, that, so that that section was dealt with purpose. Now, they're saying that you're going to amend that statute to now provide applicant is another admission that the statute doesn't apply, all right? Just think about this. You have existing permit holder. Everybody says it's confusing. It's not applicable. You need to draft it, and now he's going to draft it to put applicant in. That's the way you want to treat residents? You amend the statute to now provide something that was not in the statute and applied to them? I don't think that makes any sense.
Well, that's not totally it.
So, here we are, here we are.
Tom, I, I want the simplest possible. And you know what I'm saying? When you do a job and you don't file for a permit.
Yes.
You start construction or do some work, you are subject to a penalty.
That's because the statute says it. Every code, every code touches.
It's basic, it's basic process. You have to get a permit to do some work.
I did.
Okay, you got a permit, but it did not include the air conditioning system.
Correct, because the architect or the, or the contractor didn't put it in. I'm like a lot of other people.
I understand. Again, I think the opinion here, the building department has an opinion, the council has an opinion. I think we have to move on.
What?
We have to move on.
Well, what do we do? Wait until they amend the statute, so it says, says applicant, then would I file?
Maybe you do.
Well, all right, but you know what's bad? Let me, let me say this. Let me just, let me just finish with this. Everyone of you are educated, intelligent people, and you guide your life on what you read, in terms of instructions, the doctor's reports. Everything is done that way, all right? So, in this instance, we're taking very plain language, every permit holder. It's twisted in some convoluted way to take an applicant and interpret it that way. And at the same time, you're going to amend the law to put in applicant. Now, if all of you think that makes a lot of sense, I'm very surprised. I think you realize that that statute doesn't apply. And the only thing you're trying to do is use counsel two ways. One to, one to approve a misinterpretation, and then to correct the misinterpretation by inserting the very word that you say shouldn't be here there in the first place. If, if that's how you apply your minds, I'm very shocked.
No, first of all, the Department of Buildings has a process. They do reviews of applications. I think you've come to a conclusion that you need to pay the fine before you get the permit. Am I correct? You have a big debt.
That's right, Mr. Mayor.
So, I, I can't slice in any other way for you, Tom.
I understand that, but the only way to slice it is to understand what the, what it's about. That's why you need to.
And going forward, we want to make it clearer. So, we want the village council to look at that law, look at that resolution, and make it clearer. So, in the future, you, you've made a very good point. You made a very good point. You've been here four times.
I understand that. First time I'm getting, I'm getting a decision, which I understand. I thought that you recognized that the language didn't apply. But if you're telling me that you recognized the language didn't apply, and now you're going to, now you're going to correct the bizarre text.
Oh, Tom, you said the language didn't apply. You're the one that made the difference.
I did.
The differentiation between permit holder, right, and applicant. You're the one, okay?
So, that's why, so that's why they have to listen to something. Oh, I got it.
I understand.
Okay. Now, you, I understand what you said. I don't need anymore.
Thank you.
We have somebody on Zoom. Would you like to unmute yourself? iPhone?
Anyone on Zoom?
Yes, it's Gino Arden, 39 Meadow Street.
Good evening.
Uh, two, two comments. One, I'm going back to the Fire Safety meeting last night. I, I did try to raise my hand at the end, and I, I didn't find it in time on my phone, and the meeting adjourned. But there was discussion about having a training building within the village. And, and advantage to that would be that surrounding fire departments could train with us, and we could all have the same type of training and work together. And then later on in the meeting, I heard that, I think Franklin Square has, uh, a training site, Lindbrook and some others are coming online. So, maybe rather than us build one for other towns to come in, maybe we could utilize what is already built in neighboring towns and get the same advantage that was discussed about having multiple districts trained together. That was one comment. And the other issue regarding the, the water testing that was taking place, um, I know Ralph, I think, mentioned that there's lead in the fire hydrants. But is there any place that the water could be tested near someone's home prior to it going into the ground that goes into the house? So, is there an access point in the water main that could be tested where you can see what is the condition of the water in the middle of the street before it goes into a homeowner's line?
So, Steve, so first of all, I just want to make sure people understand that the fire hydrant is a, is a valve. It's, it doesn't have water in it. It has a valve that when opened up, water comes to the main and rushes out. The newer hydrants don't have, uh, the brass components that contain lead. And I talked to the health department. They actually believe that if you were to test the hydrants, any lead in there would flush out immediately because of the volume of water. So, so that might be a testing point, because the only, the only place I have is the input, and the only output I have are the faucets in the home and the hydrant system that are close to the areas. Um, so that's, I think that answers your question.
Chief, do you want to speak about the training facility?
Hi, Steve, how are you? It's G. Moody. Um, the training facility was, you know, proposed for the volunteer members for Garden City due to the lack of the buildings that we have now. And with this facility, it would intrigue other departments that we work with to work together. Um, not every fire department in, in the county has this ability to have these training facilities. Um, it's going to be a huge asset for the village fire department to increase our training and to entice people and other people that we work with on a day-to-day basis to come and learn and work together.
G. Moody, could you fill Steve in on the residence, uh, training facility at the water building and what happened when you were training?
So, currently, the fire department, we train at the old incinerator building, located in the village yard. Um, we had a drill one night, and one of the steps rusted away and broke underneath the fireman. Luckily, no injuries were, happened or occurred. But at this time, this building is condemned at the moment until we get a new staircase. Uh, Mr. Swazie and Giuseppe are in the process now of replacing that entire staircase to make sure it's up to code and safe for our members to train appropriately.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Having seen no, no other questions, I ask a motion to close the meeting. Any other questions in this session? Ralph, Karen? Karen, are we going through the digital session after this? Wasn't, we were discussing personal matter earlier.
Yeah, it was a personal matter.
The candidates.
We're going to do a personal matter tonight, I guess.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah.
Yeah.